And I am honored to serve as your moderator. Before we begin the 2023 town meeting, a few housekeeping points to dispense with and certainly to make you aware of. First of all, this is the first town meeting for our town administrator, Nathan Woodrow. Mr. Woodrow, please stand and be recognized. And it is also the first town meeting for our town clerk, our new town clerk, Kayce Kannesari Livingston. Kannes, please stand. Thank you. Welcome. The next meeting is being video recorded and will be posted on YouTube. If you want to address a warrant article or motion, please raise your hand. When recognized, please come forward to the center microphone. And here is the format that you'll use. Either "Thank you, Mr. Moderator," or "Mr. Moderator, my name is..." Then please state your first and last name for the record. Then give your home address. You'll be invited to proceed, and then you may do so. Do not ask direct questions. Address the chair, and then the question will be directed to the appropriate party. The counters for tonight's meeting in the case that we have to have a rising vote, a standing vote, will be Bella Caldera and Maria Torigli. Thank you both. Also, Dr. Sheila Muir from the Quavon Regional School District has requested of the chair to speak, and that has been approved. So, Dr. Muir, let's take this time as a town, as a community, as a member of the regional school district, to recognize her years of service, as she will be retiring at the end of the school year. Dr. Muir, please stand. Thank you very much. Before beginning, one last point. It has to be noted that today is the anniversary of D-Day, Operation Overlord, the invasion of Nazi-occupied Europe by Allied forces seventy-nine years ago today, on June 6, 1944. The targets were five beaches in Normandy, France. They were given the code names of Utah, Omaha were assigned to the United States, gold and sword were assigned to the British, and Juno was assigned to Canadian forces. Over one hundred and fifty thousand Allied troops faced Hitler's Atlantic War. By May 1945, the Nazis were defeated, but the first steps to victory took place eleven months earlier on the bloody beaches of Normandy. Thanks to the dedication and sacrifices of our service men and women, from that conflict and others since, we have and we will, in a few moments, participate in that uniquely New England contribution to democracy, the annual town meeting. An exercise in self-government where free people debate and decide their future. At this point, the chair declares the 2023 annual town meeting in order. Please stand. Gentlemen, please remove your caps unless you are a veteran, in which case you may render the hand salute throughout the play. That is the only exception. If you are a veteran, you may remain covered and render the hand salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of this land, one nation, under God, equal, just, and free. Thank you. Please be seated.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to put forth a procedural motion.
Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams, move that the June 2023 annual town meeting authorize the moderator to declare any vote requiring two-thirds vote to be declared on a voice vote or show of cards or hands and dispensed with the need for a counted vote. Unless the moderator is unable to make such two-thirds declaration, or a town meeting members rise to question the vote. A, when you say "all in favor," excuse me, at this point, motion by Mr. Williams, seconded by Ms. Young, thank you. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. This is a procedural motion only. Thank you. Thank you. Please lower your cards. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. At this point, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to be looking at the consent calendar. And as you have in the handout before you, the consent calendar is essentially those items as all part of the general process of town meeting. It is what the select board, the moderator, and finance committee have identified as generating no controversy and can be properly voted without debate. These articles are put out on the consent calendar. There are motions under these articles to be acted on as one unit and to be passed. So, we have a motion by Mr. Williams, seconded by Ms. Young, that the town take up Articles 1 through 5 under a consent calendar. And this is going to require a unanimous vote of town meeting. And if passed, then we will vote on all Articles 1 through 5 as a block under a single vote. If anyone objects, the single article being included in the consent calendar, we'll remove that article from the consent calendar and vote the remaining articles under the consent calendar. Okay? At this point, any questions on the motion? Is there any objection to the motion? The chair hears none. Madam Town Council, at this point, hearing no objection, the chair is going to declare the motion approved unanimously. Okay? And, thank you very much. And moving ahead from there, we're now going to be looking at Article 6. That's going to be on page three of your handout. And Article 6, "I move that the town fix the fiscal year 2024, beginning on July 1, 2023, spending limits for the revolving funds established in Chapter 4 of the Hubbard's and General Bylaws." Let's pause for a moment. Town council has advised the chair that we will take a vote on Articles 1 through 5. Sorry about that, ladies and gentlemen. All in favor of Articles 1 through 5 being approved, please raise your card. Thank you. Please lower your cards. Those opposed, please raise your card. And there is one opposed. Thank you very much, and it passes. Thank you. So now, back to Article 6, "Move that the town fix the fiscal year 2024, beginning on July 1, 2023, spending limits for the revolving funds established in Chapter 4 of the Hubbard's and General Bylaws in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, as printed in the warrant." Motion by Ms. Young, seconded by Mr. Parego. Is there any discussion on the motion? Chair hears none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Please lower your cards. Those opposed, please raise your card. And the motion passes unanimously. Article 7, "I move that the town appropriate the sum of $4,323,201, of which the sum of $91,039 shall be transferred from free cash in the balance rates and the tax letter to meet the salaries and compensation of town employees and town officers as provided by Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 108, expenses and outlays of the town departments, and other sundry and miscellaneous but regular expenditures necessary for the operation of the town for fiscal year 2024." That will be July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2024, as printed in the attached Appendix A, but not including funding for the Monticuzet Regional Vocational Technical School District Assessment or the Quavon Regional School District Budget and Debt, and further to accept and expand federal and state funds to offset certain salaries or expenses and outlays. Motion made by Ms. Monroe, seconded by Mr. Walker. Is there any discussion on the motion? And again, this is Article 7. Any discussion? All in favor, please. I'm sorry. No? Yes, ma'am. Please step forward. Mr. Moderator, state your first and last name and your address, please.
My name is Susan Braggy, and I live up on Woodrow. Um, I'm confused. There's an awful lot of stuff in here, and I did take some time to read it. Is this budget based on taxes that come in? And I know the school budget, we're not seeing this, but is this what you guys think of spending?
Thank you. Mr. Woodrow, please.
Good afternoon, everybody. And, Mr. Moderator, thank you for the time and the floor. Ms. Braggy, with no disrespect, there was a very significant period of time over the last three to four months in which I opened both publicly, privately, on the Internet. I almost went as far as to send the information out via pigeon and in an attempt to get the residents to come and speak to me regarding the budget. You did not do so. I, off the record, see you very, very often, and still not one time was the question asked regarding anything in this budget. I personally, as my first budget, went out of my way to ensure that I was over kind of communicating it. So, any questions? I will give you the floor to ask them right here through the moderator. I would accept any questions that you have, but I do feel that I was open and transparent enough through the budget and town meeting process that any questions should have been addressed prior to this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodrow. Ma'am, go ahead.
So, hi, it's Susan again. I'm not saying that you aren't transparent. I'm just, I'm more concerned about the school budget, and I know we're not talking about that right now. But what I'm asking is, the taxes that the town is bringing in. I'm assuming this is what this budget is based on. Is that correct?
Mr. Woodrow, again, again, through the chair. Through the chair, go ahead.
Through the chair. Ms. Braggy, yes, this is a balanced budget. From day one, the rules as outlined in the town charter state that the town administrator must present the select board and finance committee for their review a balanced budget. So, this budget is balanced using revenues that were coming in. They are estimated, but that is how best practices operates, as well as every other municipality in the Commonwealth. So, to our best knowledge, we updated the revenue projections as time went on. In December, they were a lot more off than they are here tonight. They are available readily on the Internet and available to be printed out at Town Hall for any resident that wishes to see them at any time. I also have begun the practice of putting out monthly and quarterly revenue and expenditure reports, which can be found on the town website, which outline by line item what we are receiving, from whom, what the estimate is, what we are spending. High charts, they're actually quite visually pleasing. So, if you would like to review those, you may do so as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Monroe.
Thank you. Heather Benar. Mr. Moderator, I just want to add something that I think might help folks who had that question. I think Nate did a great overall piece of explanation, but I think the question might go a little more specific. So, when you're looking at revenues for a town, you're looking at a couple of different sections. So, when Nate did his presentation in the past, what you see is you have taxes, right? That's the largest chunk for tax levy. So, the money that comes in from our real estate taxes, as well as our Prop 2 and 1/2%, as well as new growth, that's what you see up there. Then the next section is the state revenues, right? So, this is the numbers that go through the governor's budget, and the House budget, and then the Senate budget, and then the conference committee, and then eventually get signed. So, that's your local, that's your state aid. So, that's usually a very large chunk of our money as well. And then we have local receipts. So, if you come in to buy a birth certificate, if you have excise taxes, motor vehicle taxes, you have a board health permit, all of those pieces are part of the local receipts. And then we have any other supplemental revenue that we use to offset the cost of our budget to get to what Nate said, which was the balanced budget. So, sometimes, like, in this case, it's the free cash. When we look at our budget as a whole, we don't specifically say the taxes go to cover the cost of the school, or the taxes go to cover the cost of the town. We say it covers the cost of the entire budget. But in answer to your question, there's a portion of our free cash that we had to allocate over and above of it, what we were anticipating, in order to cover the higher cost than we had anticipated this year of the school budget. So, I don't know if that helps. I hope it does. If there's any other questions that I can help.
Thank you, Mrs. Monroe. Anyone else on the, anyone else on the article? Anyone else on the article? Yes, ma'am. And I just heard one, so if you have not done so, please switch your cell phone on vibrate or silent. Thank you. Go right ahead.
Susan Flag, nine of Green Road. How did you set your tax rate? I haven't heard anything about the tax rate being set. And when was it set?
Thank you very much. Again, the form, Mr. Moderator, please. Okay. Ms. Monroe?
So, our tax rate doesn't get set until December for fiscal '24. So, right now, what happens at the annual town meeting is the town votes on the actual budget. Once we have our budget, what happens is we go back with our assessors and our town accountant and the town treasurer and aide. They'll all sit down, and they have to file paperwork in the fall. And if you remember, usually in December, we have a tax rate hearing that the select board will do. At that time, all those numbers are firm, right? So, we'll have the final numbers from state aid, we'll know what our final new growth is, we'll have all the numbers from tonight's meeting as well, and at that time, the tax rate gets set. So, when you get your first two tax bills for the fiscal FY '24, when you get the bill for August and November, they are the estimated tax rate. That's why your tax rate always goes up, or your tax bill seems to go up, when you get the February and May, because that's the actual, and there's adjustments that happen.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on the article? On the article? The chair hears none. All in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Please lower them. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Article 8, "I move that the town raise and appropriate $447,411 for the Monticuzet Regional Vocational Technical School District Assessment for fiscal year 2024." Motion made by Mr. Parego, seconded by Ms. Young. Any discussion on the article, on Article 8? On Article 8? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. One, two, three, four. Let's start again. Lower your cards, please. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. Thank you. Please lower your cards. And it passes. Thank you. With 15 opposed. We're going to look at Article 9. Article 9, "I move that the town raise and appropriate $5,750,424 to pay the town to purchase its share of the Quavon Regional School District budget for fiscal year 2024." Motion made by Ms. Young, seconded by Mr. Parego. And at this point, any discussion as far as the motion? Again, the form, Mr. Moderator, your first, your last name, and your address. Sir?
Mark Wigler, 5.
Let's start with the form, okay? We're trying to keep it the same forever. Mr. Moderator, my name is...
Mr. Moderator, my name is Mark Wigler, 5, Troose Road, Hubbardstown.
Please proceed.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to amend the motion.
Proceed with your amendment.
I'd like to amend the motion to read, "I move that the town raise and appropriate $5,820,64 to pay the town of Hubbardstown's share of the Quavon Regional School District budget for 2024."
And is your amendment reduced to writing, sir?
Yes, it is.
Please. Thank you very much. No, no. So, your amendment versus what was said is $5,820,64.79. Okay. Mr. Administrator, can we get a copy of the amendment, please?
Yes.
Thank you. She's going to come back, make a copy, so you'll have that. Are you ready to speak to the amendment?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I could have used that. That was, the number that was, that I amended this to was the number that was voted on by the regional school committee last Wednesday night and sent out to the towns. I believe it represents only a $69,000, actually represents a $69,000 increase over what was approved by the town administrators.
All right. Before we proceed any further as far as discussion, is there a second to the amendment? Seconded accordingly. Thank you. Anything else that you'd like to add?
Actually, you know, I added some nosebleeds, but you took them away, so that's fine. The bottom line is, over the course of the last, over the course of the last three years, there's also been an increase in the number of students that attended school in Hubbardstown. And, you know, as everybody knows, as I've said in the past, you know, 20 years ago, the state actually paid for 62% of the local budget for education. Right now, here we are, 2023, and the state is paying, I believe, 48%, 48%, 49%. So, the town is actually picking up the difference. We also have some, Quavon's regional administrators are here, and they can also speak to this particular item.
Thank you. If you could just wait one moment, Mr. Wigler, you'll get your original amendment back. We just want to make sure that obviously everything is correct. There you are.
I have the number, Mr. Moderator. I have it. They're up on the screen if anyone else wants to read it.
Okay. At this point, Dr. Muir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Sheila Muir. I'm superintendent of schools for the Quavon Regional School District. I do just want to address the amendment that Mr. Wigler made. This has been a challenging budget year for the Quavon Regional School District, as I'm sure it also is for the community of Hubbardstown. Our expenses have increased significantly, excuse me, and state aid has been very, very insignificant. We received only $117,000 new dollars from the state of Massachusetts for school aid. That cost does not even cover the cost of our increase in heating oil for the next school year. We have worked very hard to reduce the budget to a 5.96% increase, which is the lowest we can go without affecting programs for our students. We've had some, again, increasing costs, as I'm sure you know. Part of the challenge with Hubbardstown, as Mr. Wigler referred to, is that two of the factors that contribute to your town's assessment, your required local contribution, which is a number that's determined by the state of Massachusetts, and it's based on your median income and your property value in your community, increased significantly this year. You also had an increase in students relative to the other communities in the Quavon Regional School District, and that has resulted in your assessment number being higher than some of the other communities and higher than our budget increase. It is important, I think, to point out that our budget increase this year is higher than it's ever been, it's been in the last 21 years. We've really tried, worked very hard over the years to keep our budget increases as low as possible. We are also putting $750,000 of district reserves into the budget to help reduce the cost to our communities. But, so, those are a few of the things that I just wanted to comment on.
Thank you very much. Anyone care to discuss the article? Anyone you'd like to discuss the article? Yes, of course, please. Ms. Monroe.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Heather Benar, 59 Green Road. So, I just wanted to throw out some numbers for folks to make sure everyone is on the same page here. So, I had Nate pull some numbers for me earlier, because I remember having these exact same conversations last year. So, as we've talked about before, you know, as a select board and even as an individual, very much in support of the schools and the school budget. I have a small child, and in a few years, will hopefully be going to the school. He already loves the playground, so we're one step closer in spending time in here, so. But some numbers just to keep in perspective. So, as everyone knows, it's not just the school budget, it's also the school budget and the town budget. So, we have to, as a select board and as a town, make sure we're providing services for everybody in our community and not just one faction of it. Last year in 2023, the school budget increased for us 7.43%, or $375,000 and some change. Our town budget increased by 3.69%, or $149,000. Even last year, we had to make cuts, which meant the departments, who are already understaffed in many cases, they have a lot of resources they don't have, they're not really competitive in pay, we have a lot, huge turnover, if you watch our meetings. We're constantly refilling positions because we can't keep people in the positions for what we're paying. They're going elsewhere. We're struggling. This year in 2024, the school's budget, as requested, was originally, or the last rendition before last week, was 7.28%, or $395,000 and some change. Our budget went up by 2.59%, or $108,000. So, again, this year, we had to make more cuts for our own departments, for the general public. So, remember, this is always a tough decision, but we're trying our best to balance between providing the services we need for the school, as well as for the town. One of the questions that had come up when many of us attended a virtual meeting of the school district early on was if they had to make cuts, or if they did make cuts, what would they look like? Right? This is a question as town officials, we face all the time. Every year, we go through budget season, every time, Nate has to sit down with every single department head and say, hey, we just don't have the money this year. What can you give back? What can you give up? So, the question for me is always, is this an equal balance on both sides? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to discuss the article? Anyone else to discuss the article? I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Woodrow, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It was me who originally, during my presentation of the budget, proposed the 6%. At that time, the proposed amendment from the Quavon Regional School District was a measly 13.5%. Excuse me if I'm quoting incorrectly. measly 13.5%, excuse me if I'm quoting incorrectly, but that's not manageable. Myself, my predecessor, other town administrators have asked the Quavon Regional School District year after year after year for a five-year plan or some sort of plan, but they refuse to give said plan. So as town administration, we are forced to work with the limited knowledge that we have until approximately March or early April. Until March or early April, I was working, working with magic numbers. I had no idea what these numbers were gonna come in at all, and when you contacted the school, they said, no, we cannot let you know ahead of time, this is the, this is the way it goes, sorry. I full, I fully agree with the school system that the state is the entity that needs to fix this problem. There should not be a town v. school issue for services. But we cannot continue to cut our police officers and our firefighters and our DPW workers to continue to put more and more and more into education without a plan. Please note, it's without a plan. I know that the select board and all of the elected and appointed officials in this community are incredibly supportive of education and want our children to have the best education that they could have, but we need a plan. We, I, by the town charter, have to present a five-year plan every year. I am in the process of putting together a capital plan that breaks down certain things into vehicles and infrastructure and technology, and I cannot say the same for the school. We don't know. Additionally, the school, much like many other schools, are using what they receive as COVID money or ESAR funds in their operating budget. Yes, it's beautiful, wonderful, fine, when you can get additional one-time revenue, but what would happen if you used a lottery ticket or a legal fund win or something like that to buy a car? You would not be able to pay the bill the next time your bill was sent to you. And so, long and short, 6% is much higher than many of us sitting over here have ever anticipated needing to even put down on the budget, never mind 7.28%. This is after one year, one year ago, we made $100,000 in cuts to services. I hope that if you find, ladies and gentlemen, to decide this evening to vote for this amendment, that you will join the select board and myself in helping to achieve an override to find a way to pay for everything that you so desperately need. I hope you understand what I'm saying and what the superintendent is saying, because we're, we're on the same team. Like, it's just two different sides of the same budget, and I would love to be able to support them at their full assessment year after year after year after year, and I'm sure the select board would, but I cannot speak for them. But tonight, all we can offer is the 6%. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boudreau. Anyone else to discuss the article, sir?
Mr. Moderator, Tim Hawley, 35, Mount Jefferson Road. I have a couple of questions. I don't know whether anyone's able to answer these, but is the, the state formula using median household income in the back of real estate bound by chapter two and a half?
Mr. Boudreau or Town Council? Town Council?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Carolyn Maria, KP Law, Town Council. The town's entire evaluation of property is bound by the 2.5% levy. So whatever we appropriated last year, we get some new growth when you have some new businesses or you have some additions to buildings, things like that, but overall, the entire ceiling, if you will, is subject to the 2.5% limit. Then you carve that up as to how you spend it, whether it's on schools, police, fire, paving roads, whatever it is, it all comes out of that 2.5% levy limit. So if we are bumping up against that ceiling for whatever reason, as the town administrator was just saying, the only other option then is to start talking about an override, which is not before this body this evening.
Mr. Hawley?
Am I correct in stating that you were asking about the state formula?
Yes, the state formula for funding-
Yeah, so the state formula, as chapter 70, was changed in 2018, don't quote me on that, but at that time, I was actually working in the State House, and no one there knew what the formula was. So I cannot sit here and tell you what the formula is bound to or not bound to. Maybe Dr. Muir could, or maybe we can make a call to our legislators on Beacon Hill, but it is a difficult formula that needs to focus more on rural communities. I understand why it focuses on the communities that it does, but it cannot do so on the backs of rural Massachusetts.
Dr. Muir, too, do you want to address that?
The required local contribution number that I refer to in my comments is calculated by the Department of Revenue. So I don't know how it's connected to 2.5% or if it is, but I will say that it is, it is based on property value in your community and your median income.
Thank you. Sir?
Mr. Moderator, I would suggest that, given the increases that we've seen in the required local contribution determined by the state formula, far exceed 2.5%. I dare say that it's not limited as our total tax revenue is, and that is why we have this balance problem, because for funding everything else, we are limited by that, but for funding the educational needs of the town, we're obliged to follow the state formula for required local contribution. And so I, I think that's an indication that we probably do need to look at an override for 2.5% because for the educational component, we're already required to override. Secondly, just very quickly, perhaps somebody can help me with this, but the difference between what we have in the, in the warrant for the school budget tonight and what Mr. Wigler proposed is $69,641 additional, with about $1,700 homes in town. I believe that works out to another $41 per household. Can anybody verify that?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Boudreau.
I left out the 79 cents, my sincerest apologies, but that's the numbers and the year-over-year with percentages.
We, we can't read it, absolutely.
I don't think that's, I don't know if that's a question.
I just want to make sure, Mr. Moderator, that we're answering the question.
Mr. Boudreau?
Is the question, the difference of the school budget versus what's proposed, and you're saying the increase to the taxpayer was the question? Or the increase was divided by the number of homes?
The, the increase in the amendment-
Yeah.
Divided by the number of homes is, is $41.
So I, I guess we're here, right? So as the budget currently stands, because we don't have an override on the budget, the only thing we'd be able to do is either amend our revenues or amend our expenses to be able to increase to that number that's currently proposed. That being said, since an override's not on the budget, it wouldn't increase tax, since it would simply take money from another source. So we would take money from free cash, we would remove money from operating stabilization, we would reduce a different budget by a certain amount, but it wouldn't go back to impact the taxpayers for an additional cost. Does that make sense?
This year.
So this year, right, as we speak right now, the current, but the current number that's on the table in the original article was $5,750. Mr. Wigler's amendment was $5,820 and some change, right? So based on that number, because we don't have a override vote, right, to do an override, you have to follow Prop. 2.5 law, you have to do a town meeting vote, and then you have to do a town election or ballot vote, right, within a period of time. We don't currently have that on the docket, it's not within the four corners, I don't think, Mr. Moderator, think of the article. Therefore, the only way to currently increase based on what Mr. Wigler had suggested is we'd have to add more money on the revenue side. So we'd have to pull from free cash, you saw earlier in our budget, we appropriated X number of dollars in free cash, we'd have to increase that, or alternatively, we'd have to pull from our reserves of operating stabilization to be able to do it. It wouldn't go back and impact the taxpayers' pocket right now.
In other words, we couldn't get the 41, we wouldn't be able to get the, if it is 41, which I'm guessing your numbers are probably pretty close, we can't just go and do a 2.5 override and get 41 extra dollars from everybody in town. It has to come from the budget that we already have, we can't go get it right now from taxpayers.
The bottom line doesn't change. Thank you very much.
Does that help? Thank you. Go ahead. Yes, let's go.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
You're welcome.
I'm Bella Caldera, 12 Seinfeld Field Road, and I'd just like to inject a little common sense, because money is finning. Now, I don't have any kids in the Quavon system, but I still want all the children to have the best we can have for them. So in essence, I want my townspeople's kids to have good stuff. But the thing is, if it's all for the children, if the school bus breaks in potholes and strands the kids, is that good for the kids? No, we gotta support the DPW. If town facilities or individual homes burn and the fire department doesn't have the resources to address the issue, does that help the kids? And the same with the fire department and other agencies. Money is finning. We have to make it go around. I trust the numbers of the town administrator. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to discuss the article?
I'm kind of mystified-
Again, the-
-of Susan Flack, nine-
That's okay. Mr. Moderator, go ahead.
Nine Upper Green Road, Hubbardston. Has anybody other considered going after the MDC? I, I, at one point in time, this town did it. They owned about 40% of this town, and when they originally took the land, there was a set amount of money that they paid. And I haven't heard anything about any increases or any communications about them. I mean, when they took the land, there was a deal that they were gonna pay a certain percentage. It's time to go after them and say, hey, look, land's worth a lot more money. I, I just, I'm sitting here saying, I haven't heard anything about that big percentage of the town paying. I know that the school, my only other comment on the school is, I had an experience when I was in the hospital, and a nurse came to me and said, they were making fun of her because she moved to Hubbardston. And she said, you know, the reason I moved here is because the schools are worth so much more money, and I don't have to pay for private schools. Consider that for the real estate values. But the issue of the MDC, I just wonder, has anybody tried to increase the amount of money?
Yes, Mr. Boud-, thank you. Mr. Boudreau?
To the moderator, Ms. Flack. There are likely residents in attendance that will be able to answer, answer this question better than I, but the equation for that, that the state funds us, and I could get you that answer, I can't connect to the internet, I actually have it on the town website, I sent it to a few residents last week, but in terms of land value that is not built upon or used for a zonable use, the value that the state gives the town of Hubbardston is fair, and it goes up each and every year. There are other assets such as water that may someday be something we could look into, but that's a very, very, very heavy lift, that we would need some minds that are educated-
Because they wrote the town down, and when they did it in the 1920s, they said that they was following the values, but if you don't ask them about the value, they're not gonna increase it. And there's not many towns that are controlled by the MDC as, as much as we are.
Absolutely.
And so, in a couple letters, you know, a little pressure might increase the value, because the state is just doing the values in general, the recreation stuff, they're not doing the water that they, what they did.
If you stop by either later this week or at your convenience, I can show you the numbers over the past few years, and by all means, if you wish to write a letter-
They have been doing slowly, I was attached here for many years, they have increased slowly, but when you go after them, they increase again, because they don't want to cause grief. Just-
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion as far as the article, as far as the amendment, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gaggy, one, one Wester Road. So I have a question for Finance Committee, I guess. Right now, there's approximately $800,000 in free cash. There's three different articles that's gonna try to appropriate $460,000. There's a estimate of $91,000 going back in, okay? We might have to pull free cash to make up the $70,000 offset, which is gonna leave us with, I don't know, less than $400,000. How long is this sustainable? I mean, this, this, this growth, this, 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 this school budget at, you know, 6%, 7% every year, $350,000, $400,000 a year, 10 years from now, it's like $3.5, $4 million more a year? This, the, the town can't afford that. Our growth isn't that. Where, where is, where is this money coming from in five or 10 years? Anybody have an answer?
Mr. Boudreau?
No?
To the moderator, Mr. Gaggy, thank you. I do have, and there has been one every year, a five-year plan, and you are correct, the five-year plan is meek. And the number-one rule of municipal finance is by no means a law or in our bylaws, is you do not want to use one-time funds to use in your operating budget, because that doesn't make sense, because it's not recurring and it's one-time revenue. But I cannot sugarcoat it without a override or a significant change in the types of revenue that are coming into this community, whether it be economic development or something else, the, it is not sustainable. Like, to use this free cash year after year, we can, I can get you a number, but we can maybe do this for another year or two without a, but in next year's five-year projection, which I will start working on in the fall, I will have a better understanding of what things look like, but you also, on the complete other side of that, have to remember that five-year projection is a rainy day, like, it's a sad document, because you're basically saying, oh, if everything went wrong, what would we look like? So somewhere in the middle of the sunshine and rainbows, we don't plan for five years out from the school district, truly, five-year plan that we write is the honest truth, and to fund that, the town of Hubbardston is going to need to do something at some point.
And, uh, Dr. Muir, last fall, you said the same thing. Everybody, all the oil at the school is so expensive, everybody here, whether the electric heat or oil heat, everybody's paying more too, because all town departments, fire station, they're all paying more too. You know, it's, it's not just the school, and, uh, you know, I just, I'm sick of it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gaggy. Let me see, yes, sir?
Mr. Moderator, Mark Wigler, five Crews Road. I just want to make just a couple of comments, and then I'll sit down. Bottom line is, you got a pretty good school system here, and the proof is in the pudding. 260 folks from other school districts come to learn in this particular district. You ought to be proud of it, and you ought to fund it appropriately. The second thing is, the Quavon Regional School Committee used $750 in excess and deficiency- dollars in excess and deficiency, what's our free cash, to deeply... to really, to put down the assessments of the local towns in order to ensure that we can help out. So I just wanna make that perfectly clear.
Thank you, Mr. Wiggler. Anyone else to discuss the article? Anyone else to discuss, actually, the amendment to the article?
Yes, ma'am. Of course.
Mr. Moderator, just a follow-up on what we just heard. I was wondering if someone from the school could just respond to what their E and D balance is. I know they said they're using seven hundred and fifty thousand. There was a prior comment about how much free cash the town had and how much we're gonna be using to balance our budget. I'm just wondering if someone can answer what their starting E and D was before they took the seven fifty out to balance.
Thank you very much, Dr. Muir.
Our certified E and D was one point five million. It will now be seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we have contributed this year.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Muir. Anyone else to address the amendment only? To address the amendment only? Chair, in abundance of caution, is going to ask Mrs. Strigney, Ms. Caldera, to please come forward. So, Mrs. Strigney, if you can prepare yourself to count this side of town meeting, you're going to be counting this side, please, okay? All right, at this point, we are voting on Mr. Wiggler's amendment to strike the original amount in the warrant and replace it with the following: five million, eight hundred twenty thousand, sixty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents. And that was duly cited by Mr. Hawley. Right, Mr. Hawley?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you very much. All in favor, please signify by raising your cards, and please keep them raised. All in favor of the amendment? Those opposed to the amendment, please raise your card and please keep them raised. Please lower your cards. Thank you. The result of the vote is as follows. There are twenty-eight, the affirmative, seventy-four, and the negative, the amendment fails. Any further discussion on Article Nine? We're back to the original amount of five million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars. Any further discussion? The chair sees none. All in favor, please, and sorry, sir. I try and scan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joshua Harris, eight Williamsville Road, cut off. I believe it was Mr. Riggly said that there was an increase in Hubbardston students to the Q RSD this year, and Dr. Muir said that there was an increase of the relative number of the number of students relative to other towns. Does anyone know the actual increase in the students this year over last year?
Well, sir, based on the information that was provided by Mr. Wiggler, and I quote, Hubbardston enrollment numbers are up fifteen over last year, that's one five, and an increase of sixty-two since the 2021 school year. One five.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Any further discussion as far as Article Nine? And the chair sees none. All in favor of Article Nine, as presented, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Please lower them. Those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. The chair will count. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, fifteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. Okay. And there are twenty-three in the negative, thank you, and the article passes. We're now looking at Article Ten. Article Ten, I move that the town raise and appropriate twenty-eight thousand, five hundred, twelve dollars to pay its share of the Quavon Regional School debt for fiscal year 2024. Motion made by Mr. Williams, seconded by Mr. Walker. Any discussion on the article? Discussion? Please.
I would like to make an amendment to Article Ten. I would like to amend Article Ten to be... to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of thirty thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-nine cents to pay its share of the Quavon Regional School debt for fiscal year 2024.
And is your motion to amend reduced right now?
I just have a...
Can we just compare numbers? Thank you very much. Okay. So, Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Moves to amend by striking the twenty-eight, five, twelve number and inserting therein thirty thousand, two hundred, twenty-five dollars and forty-nine cents. Before we proceed any further, is there a second? Is there a second? I'm sorry.
Right, right.
No, no, no. Before we proceed, motion has to be made seconded. Thank you. There is a second. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Administrator.
Hi. So here, I don't think anyone sitting in this gym or here, as I can't speak for anybody again, is going to oppose to two thousand dollars overall. But this once again goes back to when I have to turn in the budget balanced based on revenue to the Select Board and the Finance Committee by January or February, and the Quavon Regional School District is not giving us adequate and reasonable numbers until April, this is what happens. I have to go with my most knowledgeable and estimates based on last year's numbers versus proposed numbers, and this is how it came up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to discuss the amendment? Did you... There's another several people. Do you wanna add more to it? Yes, ma'am.
The reason I did make the amendment was because it was the incorrect number. It was last year's numbers. It was not the current number. And the school committee has tried to work very diligently to work with the towns as well, and they have agreed to help try to do a five-year plan. However, they cannot... we cannot project revenues, so that's why that plan is not feasible. It is not that the school district is being uncooperative or not transparent. Reason for the amendment was because this is the actual debt that is due.
Thank you. Thank you. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Laura Foley, and I'm from twelve Pitcherville Road. Very simple question. Could you or somebody please explain what is the difference between Quavon Regional School debt and the Quavon Regional School budget?
Absolutely. Mr. Woodrow, did you wanna do that? Or Dr. Muir? You're getting a mileage in tonight, Doctor. Mr. Woodrow, let's defer to that.
Absolutely. Please.
Several years ago, the Quavon Regional High School needed a repair to the roof, the atrium roof, and some window work. And at the time, the communities, as part of the regional agreement, any capital projects that are in excess of five thousand dollars, the cost of those capital projects is shared by the member towns. That's part of our regional agreement. So at the time, this was an expensive project. The communities agreed to borrow the money for the project and pay for it over time. Every year, for the duration of the loan, each of the five member communities needs to pay their debt assessment to pay for the project on the atrium roof in the Middle High School. So this is simply a calculation of what the town owes for their portion of the capital project.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Monroe?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Heather Monroe, fifty-nine Grams Road. I just have a follow-up. I was wondering if someone from the school could answer for us. So if the new assessment here for the debt is thirty thousand, two hundred, twenty-five, I'm just wondering when the school knew that number and when the school communicated to the town that was the debt number? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Monroe.
Without...
Oh, I'm sorry. Nope. Thank you for your question, Dr. Muir. Or I take it the business manager or whoever you want?
I asked Mrs. Duval, who is our Director of Administrative Services, for the moment in time when we knew the exact assessment, the debt assessment. I don't... she's not able to access her email at this time, so... But we do know that the town was notified in the April thirtieth assessment letter, and then again on May thirty-first in the assessment letter.
So just to be sure that the chair understands correctly, you're saying it was communicated both April and...
April thirtieth and May thirty-first.
And May thirty-first. Thank you.
I don't disagree, but our timeline has the documents closing ahead of that.
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion as far as the amendment? This is the amendment only. Please.
Mr. Moderator, Francis Steiger, sixty-five Gilbrook Road. I believe we're walking really on tightrope tonight with the budget. And I think the important question to ask, either to the town administrator, the Finance Committee, or maybe somebody from the Select Board, would be, if this amendment is approved and the additional funding is approved, what do we have to take off the table? And how do we manage that? I don't think we've ever confronted something like this here in a meeting such as the one that we have tonight, and therefore, guidance from either party would be great, appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodrow.
To the moderator. Thank you, Mr. Steiger. This two thousand and some change would likely be able to be taken care of via free cash. It would not make that much of a difference. We... this is less than three thousand dollars. I can't speak for anyone here, but I don't, again, I don't think that there is a major issue with the two thousand to twenty-five hundred dollars. The issue is greater than that. But we can figure out the twenty-five hundred dollars without major issue.
Thank you, Mr. Woodrow. Anyone else on the amendment only, please? On the amendment only? Okay. At this point, all in favor of the amendment, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Please lower your cards. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. The chair is in doubt, please lower your cards. All in favor of the amendment, please signify by raising your card, and please keep them raised. Please lower your cards. The result of the vote is as follows. There are thirty-four in the affirmative, thirty-seven in the negative, and the amendment fails. Back to Article Ten. Back to Article Ten. Any discussion as far as Article Ten? Chair here is done, and all in favor, please signify by raising your card.
Mr. Moderator?
Excuse me?
Do you wanna explain that?
Thank you.
Mr. Woodrow?
In the effort of saving time and the fact that the difference here is seventeen hundred thirteen dollars and forty-eight cents, I was speaking with legal counsel and Select Board Member Monroe regarding a potential amendment to fund the debt, as it is minimal money, and we likely don't wanna come back to a town meeting to vote on seventeen hundred dollars.
At this point... Okay. It is viewed by some as inside baseball, but there is a reason why we have procedures, why these procedures are tested, and why your will prevails. So what is going to happen now? The vote, the amendment failed. Okay? The amendment failed. Mr. Woodrow explained that with the concurrence of the Select Board, the amount, the thirty thousand, two hundred, twenty-five dollars and forty-nine cents will be approved, or at least will be presented to town meeting for your approval. But first, there has to be a motion to reconsider. But first, there has to be a motion to reconsider. Does that make sense? You have to reconsider the vote. Okay? If that passes, then we can proceed and there will be an amendment made seconded. If there's any discussion, there's discussion, and then there'll be a vote. Okay? All right? Yes, yes, okay. Thank you. At this point, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Moderator, Jeff Williams, 98 Old Princeville Road. I'd like to make a motion to reconsider.
The?
The amendment.
The vote on the amendment. Thank you. So Mr. Williams moves, seconded by Mr. Steiger, to reconsider the vote on the amendment. Is there any discussion on the motion to reconsider only? You have to be very precise. You're just discussing the pros and cons of reconsideration. The chair here is none. Oh, thankfully. At this point, please raise your cards if you are in favor of the motion to reconsider. Thank you. Please lower your cards. Those opposed to the motion to reconsider, please raise your card. And the motion to reconsider prevails, having met the two-thirds majority. At this point, Ms. Monroe, do you have your amendment ready?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town raise and appropriate $30,225.49, of which $1,713.49 to be transferred from free cash and the balance to be raised and appropriated from the tax levy for the regional school district debt for FY 2024.
Motion made by Ms. Monroe, seconded by Mr. Williams, to amend the amount to $30,225.49. Is that correct? Okay?
Yes.
So again, you understand what has happened? That is what is now being proposed and what is now before you for your approval or rejection. Any discussion on the amendment? Sir? Please.
Jay Gobin, 17 Seminole.
I'm sorry, sir. Can you repeat your name? Mr. Moderator, I am?
I am, sorry, Mr. Moderator. I am Jay Gobin. G-O-B-I-N. Yet. And 17 Seminole. And I was just wondering why the amount is, why did it change? It's like the 12th, 11th payment, 12th payment out of 14, and you don't know what it is. Is the interest rate went up or why is it?
The chair is being told it's interest. Okay? Oh. Story of my life. Anyone else? Any discussion on, any discussion on the amendment, excuse me, on the article as amended? Correct, Town Council? Ralseth? The article is amended. It had passed. Vote on the amendment. Thank you, thank you. Okay. At this point, all in favor of the amendment, please raise your card. Thank you. Please lower your card. Those opposed, please raise your card. Thank you. And there's one in the negative, and the amendment passes. Town Council, no need for vote on the article as amended directly. Okay. We're now moving to Article 11. Article 11. I move to adopt Article 11 as printed in the warrant. And this is going to be moved by Ms. Young, seconded by Mr. Perico. Is there any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? The chair sees none. Oops, sorry, sir.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
Paul Sweeney, 40 Williamsville Road, Hobbys Road. I'm reading in here Article 11. Where, what is and who does on a committee get stipends? Is that a clerical error?
Okay. So to make sure that the chair understands your question, Mr. Sweeney, you want to know what committees receive stipends? Is that correct? That's correct. Go ahead, Mr. Administrator.
To the moderator. Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. This was not a $40,000 article regarding any and all committees. It is specifically the cable committee in which stipends go to pay the director, who is right there. And our assistant transfer collector does two hours per week as a aide to the cable commission, just kind of as a FYI. This has gone up because of the unanticipated increases in our hybrid meetings and different recordable interests since the COVID pandemic. This is not coming from taxpayer money. It's coming from you, no matter what. But you can find where this money comes from on the back of your cable bill. So that money is not taxpayer money. It funds the fantastic job done by our cable advisory commission and local access cable station, and that is all.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Anyone else who'd like to discuss Article 11? All in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Please lower your cards. Those opposed, please raise your cards. And one opposed. Thank you very much. And the article passes. Yes, please state your point.
As I understand it, we voted to amend Article 10. We did not complete an actual vote on Article 10 itself. Is that not correct?
So there was a question that the chair posed to Town Council whether or not it was necessary to proceed with a vote on the article as amended. My understanding at that point was that Town Council had said no. Is that correct? At that point?
Correct. You took a motion to reconsider, which passed.
Which passed.
Then you took a vote.
Which passed.
As amended by Ms. Moderator.
Okay. So is that okay? Thank you very much. Now is the time, if you have a question, I salute you. This is the time to raise questions, not to wait and then try and recapture the horse after it has left the proverbial barn. So thank you very much. Okay. So now we're going to take a look at Article 11 and, I believe I? Oh, we're on 12, okay. All right. Article 12. Thank you. I move that the town transfer $390,000 from free cash to pay for the fiscal year 2024 capital expenses, including all costs incidental and related thereto, as delineated in Article 12 of the warrant. Okay? And that is a motion made by Ms. Monroe, seconded by Mr. Williams. Is there any discussion on the article? This is Article 12. The chair, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Lou Gagné, 1 West Road. I just have a question. Library facilities need assessment. We're going to pay somebody six grand for an assessment? How long are they going to be there? For a couple of weeks assessing? Like, who are we paying? A state worker? What's going on?
Thank you, Mr. Gagné. Mr. Woodrow.
With all respect, I believe the chair of the library trustees is in attendance. I will give the floor to her with your approval, Mr. Moderator.
Absolutely.
Moderator, my name is Connie Stripmadder, 98 Old Westminster Road. And I'm currently the chair of the library trustees. And we have received some funding over the past years for library facility maintenance. And we want to make sure we're doing service to the town by ensuring that the products or the projects we take on are being done in an efficient manner. We don't want to take on a project, make renovations to windows, and then come to do a next project where we have to redo that again. Right? So we want to hire a consultant to kind of help us, guide us through developing a facilities maintenance plan so that we can move forward in a efficient manner.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Francis Steiger, 65 Yolbun Road. I'm also part of the planning board and part of the capital improvement committee. To answer the gentleman's question and for everybody else, we also questioned the amount. And after significant discussions, we do consider that the amount that was requested was in line with what the current rates are for somebody to come in and evaluate the overall scope of the project. We have to remember, this is historical building, has enormous amounts of work that still needs to be done. And it is important, as any kind of project that entails a historical building such as this here, that it be done in a certain sequentiality so that you do not spend monies at the very beginning that are eventually not going to result in the benefits because you then have to take it away and do something else with it. So as a result of this here, again, part of the capital improvement committee did review this here. It's a really good question, and we do want to make sure that the monies are spent as efficient, as effectively and as sufficiently as possible.
Thank you very much. Anyone else to speak to Article 12? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Please lower your card. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And two. Two in the negative, and the article passes. Article 13. Excuse me. I move that the town approve Article 13 as printed in the warrant, made by Mr. Perico, seconded by Mr. Walker. Is there any discussion on the motion, any discussion on the article? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Mr. Gagné.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Lou Gagné, again, 1 West Road. I'm just curious if there was at least three to five estimates made for the replacement of the boiler?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Woodrow.
To the moderator, to the floor. Mr. Gagné, there are a number of availabilities on boards and committees locally. If you would like to join us in the upcoming fiscal year, you can find them on the town website. So we did get notice of this boiler issue from the Quavon Regional School District in very early 2023. It was proposed to us as a $14,000 to $20,000 fix. As I am town administrator and not an A-FAC and boiler technician, I, among the select board member Peter Walker, took a visit to the school and it was determined and kind of said to us that it was a 30-plus year boiler. In contemplating the return on investment and spending $20,000 to get another three to five years or to just kind of take the hit and buy the boiler to get 30 plus, it was determined that we should propose the latter. I do have a number of quotes, and those quotes are 36 months out. So we are going to be waiting to replace this boiler for another 36 months due to supply chain issues, even if it passes here this evening. As the superintendent spoke upon earlier, this is written into the agreement with the school that states anything over, I believe, $5,000 in a municipal elementary school is taken care of by the municipal entity. So as much as this is something that I or we did not want to see on this warrant this evening, it is something that we must deal with, and it was decided by the select board and the finance committee that it would be best to propose a complete new boiler versus a patched up. Thank you.
Sir?
Mr. Moderator, Mike Foley, 12 Pitcherill Road. You say that the boiler, you say that the boiler will be a three-year wait time due to supply chain. Why are we paying for the whole amount now and why can't we just split that out over the next few years and to lessen the burden on our current budget that we're all sitting here signing about?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Woodrow.
We likely wouldn't have to pay upfront, and that is something we very well could consider if, if I'm being completely honest, that's not something that I had thought about. I wish this would have come prior to this evening because maybe that's something that if it was brought to the select board and finance committee's attention at an earlier time, we could have worked upon. But as of right now, the issue at hand is a $50,000 boiler purchase, which I do have quotes for. If I had more to tell you, I would tell you right now. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Discussion on Article 13. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Lou Gagné, 1 West Road. So if you're paying for it upfront now, the price can't change in three years when they, their labor all goes up annually to do all the work?
Thank you, Mr. Woodrow.
Per purchasing requirements, we would be obligated, well, the school would do it. They would have to get three quotes, find the lowest quote, and sign a contract with that company. Once the contract is signed, that would be locked in, whether it takes two weeks or 36 months to get the boiler into the school.
And so there won't be any increase, so we, more money being bished out in three years?
No, there will not.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Yes, ma'am?
Susan Boy, 903 Road. It's been my experience, if you put something out to bid and you have $50,000, chances are pretty good, if I was a, somebody for boiler deal, I'd bid $50,049. I mean, it's like saying, hey, this is what we got, this is what we'll spend. Shouldn't you not, until you look like you're actually going to get it, not put the amount on by next year? If it's a money problem?
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else on Article 13? Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Heather Monroe, 59 Grams Road. Just to respond to that, so, understanding how procurement works and so forth, so we're obligated in good faith to put out numbers. One of the things we have to do whenever we're purchasing something that has to do with the building, so it's going to be under what's called master of laws, Chapter 149 for construction, is we're required to post in a state registry called the central register. One of the things we have to do is we have to put in the estimated cost of what we think the actual cost is going to be. Surprisingly, it doesn't mean that people actually go over. A lot of times, people get competitive and they go under because they know there's four or five people, they're all looking at the same number, and they're trying to be the best bid because they want to make sure they're the lowest and the ones who get the job. So it does work both ways, but it is a legal requirement, and we are required to do it in good faith.
Thank you, Mrs. Monroe. Anyone else to discuss Article 13? Chair sees none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Please lower your cards. Those opposed, please raise your card. Article passes. There's one opposed. Thank you. Article 14. I move that the town approve Article 14 as printed in the warrant, motion made by Mr. Walker, seconded by Mr. Williams. made by Mr. Walker, seconded by Mr. Williams. Any discussion on Article 14? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bella Caldera, 12 Simon Deal Road. We're going to spend $12,000 on brine? That's a lot of pickles. What's the brine used for if not pickles?
Thank you very much, Miss Caldera. Mr. Budrow.
So I'm going to be calling on Superintendent Brown to discuss this further to you, but one of the things as town administrator with the select board, we encourage in department heads is to look towards ways to work with other communities to save money. I, much like Bella, did not know what brine was five or six weeks ago, but now, after speaking with Travis, who I will give a moment to tell you all about it, I have learned that this cooperative with the towns of Templeton and Winchton will save money on our snow and ice operations as brine, outside of being the thing you put your pickles in, is a pre-treatment for the roads. Anything else you'd like to add, Travis?
Brine, you, actually, people really don't understand that if you see the lines of the road, that...
Mr. Moderator.
Sir.
Salt brine, I've been trying to get in.
I know, you're well-known, but first and last name, please pull the record.
Travis Brown, DBW Director, obviously. Salt brine, I've been trying to get into town for us to save some money. The reason why we can't do it ourselves is because we don't have town water. With that said, we've been looking to join in with different things in town to save money with other towns. So this one, I come across, Templeton and Winchton wanted to come together and do this. The brine system, which is, we'll be spending the money on a maker. The brine maker itself will all have a 3,000-gallon container to put our own brine in. It'll be made in Templeton, we'll be charged for it. And what the cost savings is, is that we'll be putting down, like, right now, all we have is granular salt. So we have two settings, which is either at a full treatment at 250 pounds per lay mile or 125 per lay mile. At 90 this year, the salt was at $94.70 a ton. So using brine to show you, if we were to treat at 250, due to a pre-treat of the town, at 250 with granular salt, it would cost us just under $2,000. If I brine the town with the 80 miles, it'll cost us just, just over 500. So, all right, I'm putting out with brine, you're putting out about 23 pounds of salt when you put brine down compared to 250 pounds per lay mile. So I'm putting out, there'd be less chloride in the environment, which we want. Want two, it will help with being on the ground. We can put it up and out there a week ahead and still have the effect in this. When we put it down compared to putting granular down, when you put it down with granular, it scatters, it goes off the road, so it doesn't all stay on the road. When you put it with a brine, it stays right where you put it on the road. The water evaporates from it, and the salt stays on the road. When either a fog, snow, or anything like that comes in, that moisture in the air that activates the brine, that's why you will then see the brine, it'll get wet, and it will spread out some. So now, what it does, brine's a tool, salt's a tool, anything that you use on the road, including your plow blades, is a tool. So this tool here will, one, save the town money, two, put less chloride out in the environment, three, it will sit there and allow us to have one guy spend a day, possibly if we get another spray, uh, spray system, put in another truck, be two guys on regular time during the day to, to brine the town, to pre-treat the town, no overtime, not all five trucks out there pre-treating the town, that's diesel fuel wear and tear on vehicles, so on and so forth. So with brine, you're putting down 23 pounds per lane, right? So now, we put it down 40 gallons per lay mile, which is 90, 92 pounds per lay mile. So said, even at half treatment, you're still saving, what's that, 30, 40 pounds per lay mile? Do the math, it is definitely a savings. So with doing this, in other words, a gallon of brine costs 18 cents. So a pound, so that's what, 20, 23 pounds a gallon. So if I was, if you did 94, 70, that's a ton, that's 1,000. It's about 20, it's about $20 if you were to do salt. Okay, so there's quite a, quite a bit of savings. So anyways, what I'm trying to say is that we have three towns coming in. Templeton has by far the cheapest water prices that there, that there are, so that is where the system's going to stay. There won't be any graver between the three towns. So 15,000 is very cheap, seeing the container itself is like three grand, that's just the whole brine, and the, and the containment center itself is 100 and some odd dollars, 100 and some odd thousand dollars, sorry. So Winchton's helping with the L, a lot of the plumbing, so a lot of the towns are coming together to do this because they see the savings in it. Honestly, it's a, it's a great benefit for Princeton to be able to get into this, seeing that we honestly don't have public water, and it is a great savings to the town.
Thank you very much. So it's $12,000.
$12,000.
Right, $12,000. So just to clarify and to be transparent, this is solely, solely for brining as opposed to pickling. With that, with that said, all in, any further discussion on, on the article? Thank you. I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Just one quick, it's the, the, what is it? The 12,000 goes towards the approved. So what we use in brine, we get, we have a meter on there, we put meters on, so that's the automatic, we put it into the container, and then we get a bill from, council comes out on winter, winter.
It's so rich. All, is there any further, any further discussion on Article 14? See none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card, raising your cards. Glasses. Thank you. Please lower your cards. Those opposed, please raise your card. And the article passes unanimously. Congratulations. Nice job. Give them a round of applause. Well done. We'll serve no brine before it's time. Okay, I couldn't resist. Article 15, here we go. We're looking at Article 15 and the motion. I move that the town authorize the select board to acquire by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain, the fee to and/or permanent and/or temporary easements for public way purposes, including without limitation for the construction, operation, installation, maintenance, improvement, repair, replacement, and/or relocation rights of ways outlined in Article 15 of the June 6, 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, and further, B, enter into a construction access permit or such other temporary occupancy agreement with the Department of Conservation and Recreation, and further, C, authorize the select board to enter into all agreements and take any and all actions as may be necessary or appropriate to effectuate the foregoing purposes. Motion made by Mrs. Monroe, seconded by Mr. Williams. Is there any discussion as to the article? Chair sees none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Please lower them. Those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. Two in the negative. Thank you very much. And the article passes. So now, we are looking at Article 16. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $31,890 from the Community Preservation Fund Undesignated Reserves for the purpose of funding the FY2024 annual debt service obligations for the rainbows and playground improvement project as previously approved under Article 18 of the June 23, 2020 Annual Town Meeting. Motion made by Ms. Young, seconded by Mr. Pareto. Is there any discussion as to Article 16? Chair sees none. All in favor of Article 16, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Please lower them. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Article passes unanimously. Thank you. Article 17. I move that the town appropriate $20,486 from Approved Community Preservation Act Historic Reserve to fund the fiscal year 2024 annual debt service obligation for the roof replacement of Hubbard's Public Library as previously approved under Article 14 of the June 2018 Annual Town Meeting. Motion made by Ms., by Mrs. Monroe, seconded by Mr. Pareto. Is there any discussion as to Article 17? Chair sees none. All in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Please lower them. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Article passes unanimously. Thank you. Article 18. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $5,000 from the fiscal year 2024 Estimated Community Preservation Fund Revenue for committee administrative expenses and reserve from the fiscal year 2024 Estimated Community Preservation Fund Revenue for future appropriations, the sum of $10,000 for historic resources, the sum of $10,000 for community housing, the sum of $10,000 for open space, and the sum of $65,000 for the undesignated reserve, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. Motion made by Ms. Young, seconded by Mr. Pareto. Is there any discussion as to Article 18? Chair sees none. All in favor, signify by raising the cards. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. One opposed. Thank you very much. And the article passes. Article 19. I move that the town adopt Article 19A as printed in the warrant. This is a motion made by Mrs. Monroe, seconded by Mr. Williams. Is there any discussion as to Article 19A? Let me see. Let's start back. Sir. Whoops, sorry about that.
Mr. Moderator, my name is Guy McCourt, 20 Main Street. I would like to know exactly if there's anyone that can address the question regarding, I understand the, the current bylaw allows to actually make that changes. But regarding the Board of Health and Finance Committee, I'd like to understand if there's any other towns or any places in Massachusetts that actually allow such recommendation, and if you guys have a certain impact of having a role being appointed as opposed to elected, I'm concerned even dissolve aspect of accountability when it comes to that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Budrow.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you to the floor. With the most respect, if there were lines out the door for people waiting to run for these roles, this wouldn't have even been an option for us to bring up at this time. I can refer to Leo Council on an estimate of how many communities that she would say, in her best knowledge, do have appointed Board of Health and Finance Committee, but I can speak to one right next door. Princeton does have appointed both, and it works just fine. As of right now, I believe almost all of the Finance Committee was appointed by the select board due to a failure to elect anyhow. So it seems to be working, but this was mostly brought up due to the fact that people aren't running for things. Like, if a number of people do not run for the Finance Committee as write-ins, the Finance Committee will have to be renamed to Chuck Reed starting next week. So it's not a slight, this isn't an agenda from anyone. There are protections to the duly elected members. They will be what the, this would only take place once their term ends, and it would be a kind of revolving thing instead of a, from here on out, you guys are out and these guys are in. So, and the duly elected members will be allowed to have that first elected opportunity, appointed opportunity by statute. So this is a protection that was put into the, into the charter for just this reason. Right now, I can let the town clerk speak to it if she would like, but we have, I believe, 20 open positions with eight people running for them. That's a waste of time and energy when it may be easier. Who knows? Maybe there's a, a nice doctor out there that wants to be part of the Board of Health, but he says, eh, you know, he or she says, hey, you know what, I don't want to run for that. But they may be interested in seeking a appointment by the select board. So it's really up to you. The town clerk, who is now our former town clerk, proposed this simply because the town charter said to. So if any, there are any questions, I did anticipate that the Board of Health and the Finance Committee would be the two boards that residents had questions about, but I'm here to answer more questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, this is all going to be divided by panel. So right now, 19A is, so please focus on the Board of Health, okay? Please.
Bella Caldera, thank you, Mr. Moderator, 12 Simon Deal Road. I tend to be very concerned when elected positions are turned to appointed. I myself was originally elected to the position in which I served the town, and that was later changed to appointed. I see a slippery slope here, and when people lose the right to vote on things, it generally goes away permanently. It doesn't come back. Am I to understand that henceforth, the Board of Health and these other boards would all be appointed, or in future years would we again have elections? Because, you know, I recognize that the Board of Selectment and other people are in between a rock and a hard place because there simply aren't people stepping up. So if I were able to address this community, I would beg people to step up and participate in the running of your community before the opportunity to do so by election goes away. I cannot do more for this town than I am doing already because I, I have served you for decades now, and I will continue to do so while I have breath and legs to stand on. But still, I, you know, is there some way that we can incentivize people more to step up and participate in your community? We have a wonderful place here. I love this town deeply. I've been here 26 years, and I am happy to give my time to help make, to do one of the many jobs that needs to happen. But if there was a way that I could encourage or beg people to come and step up and build these things by election, I would do so. But it's up to individuals. Thank you.
Thank you. In, in communicating telepathically with the administrator, unless there would be a move to revert back to elected, it will stand, if approved, it will stand as an appointment. Okay? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Moderator, Jocelyn Levine, 29 Cruz Road, and I may have just addressed the question that I had, but I, too, am very sympathetic to the situation that the town is in, in having 20 open positions, only people running, and it's, it is indeed a rock and a hard place. a rock and a hard place. Uh, I, however, agree, um, with the slippery slope of losing our elections, and I'm wondering if there is an option to consider appointments only as a default? If there were not to be, um, an election to, or if the elected, election did not fill a position, would appointment be a default potential?
Thank you.
Oh, so if we do that anyway, why would we change anything at this point?
Because the town charter says, we, as the Select Board, shall bring this to you at the town meeting. It's clearly written in our town charter, we have to whether we want it to or not. So, it's up to you guys to choose.
So, point of clarification, Mr. Moderator.
Stay, yeah, stay your point.
If we vote no on this motion, then you will continue to have elections, and the default position would be that the Select Board would make appointments in the event that no one is elected to fill a vacancy?
That is correct. Uh, Mr., that is correct. Mr. Woodrow.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the floor. So, ma'am, what that is called is a failure to elect, and failure to elects build on themselves because when there is a failure to elect, the position is then appointed by the Select Board until the next readily available election. So, that's why we have twenty positions open. There shouldn't be twenty positions on the ballot for an annual town election. That's because we are now three, four, five years into no one seeking these positions and being appointed, no one seeking these positions and being appointed. It's fine, I'm sure no one is losing sleep over it, but as the town charter states, we did have to bring it up. It's right in there, it says shall, and I'm going to be putting more emphasis on the town charter because, like most things, we did lose track of a couple of dates during the COVID pandemic, so that is where this came from. I was speaking with the previous town clerk today, did you see this? Well, we have twenty elections, twenty electable positions. That's maybe not right. So, if we don't do something about this now, next year is going to be twenty-four positions, following twenty-six, and then you're going to pay for another page of the annual town election. And so, it's not necessarily about elected versus appointed at this point, it's building on itself, but it is, at the end of the day, your right to vote upon as residents of Hubbard City. But I can sit here and positively say that provisionally, all four boards will come up again next year after the results of the June thirteenth Annual Town Election.
If the chair, no, no, ma'am, uh, but the chair would just like to point out, if you look under the explanation, Article nineteen, look at that second sentence. This section states that if two consecutive elections for a town-elected office or board have fewer candidates than the available positions on the ballot, the town clerk must notify the Select Board. So, here, the Select Board is now just taking the next logical step in keeping with the town charter. Okay?
I do not see that on my copy. I don't know.
Under explanation.
I don't see.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes? In the back, please. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Judy Hill, dot W. Morgan Road. I speak mostly from my experience on the Board of Health, and I speak because I am not in favor of an appointed Board of Health. I have ever, I have over forty years as a volunteer in a number of different volunteer groups and in leadership for a volunteer organization that presently has approximately six hundred volunteers. Our town is run by volunteers. Volunteers step forward out of interest to give a gift of time, talent, and commitment. Volunteerism flows in a pattern of mountains and valleys. Volunteers come forward in a great numbers when an event is urgent, like the storm of two thousand eight, or the need to help at a COVID clinic, or when the event catches the imagination, like the library row race. The mountain. But then, there is the valley. When volunteer groups struggle to get even ten percent of their membership to participate, the town is not immune to this pattern. I can tell you that my organization right now, I'm struggling to get ten percent of my volunteers to participate. It's just the valley. Question here is, does making a board appointed, appointed versus an elected board really solve the problem? Does it offset this pattern that is embedded into the system? The Board of Health has an added uniqueness. The Massachusetts General Law supports a form of independence to the Board because of the nature of the work that they are obligated to provide. Occasionally, this independence is challenged, and involved Board of Health has prevailed. Part of that law also states that the Board can be elected or appointed. Precedent is that the larger cities like Fitchburg, Leinster, or Worcester appoint their members of the Board of Health, but smaller cities like Gardner and towns like ourselves elect Board members. As said before, there's a pattern to volunteerism, and I don't see that going to an appointed system is going to alter this pattern, nor do I see going to an appointed system is going to cause volunteers to step forward to offer a gift of time to the town. In fact, it opens the door to short-term appointments because so-and-so knows so-and-so who's willing to fill in instead of bringing genuine interest and commitment to the town long-term, therefore providing to the town consistency and valuable, experienced Board members. Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, say your point, please.
The city of Gardner has a three-member appointed Board of Health.
Thank you very much for that information. Um, someone else? Yes? Mrs. Torigan?
Mr. Moderator, Maria Torigne, forty-first Street Road. Um, maybe an alternative would be to consider changing committees from five to three, and it wouldn't be so hard to fill them, instead of just taking our elective rights away. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. In the back, please.
Mr. Moderator, Catherine Hansgate, uh, from the Board of Health, uh, and I live at one forty-three Williamsville Road. The importance of providing public health and safety is vital to our town, and this is one of the things that, um, Judy just spoke about. But is it not as important as the work the Select Board does? It is. We provide health and safety to all of you, and therefore, I recommend that we continue electing Board of Health in Hubbard City, just like we elect the Select Board.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Mr. Monroe? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Heather Monroe, twenty-third Ramsey Road. Um, I know Ms. Young already stated this earlier, but I just want to reiterate that, you know, we have a town charter that the townspeople voted on, approved, and gave us as the Select Board and other officials, including me and other boards, the direction of what we're supposed to do as a town. And one of the things they wanted us obviously to consider, those founders of this document, was when we have a position that has had failure to elect a number of times, the question is, what's causing that? What can we do differently? And sometimes, people feel shy, and they're not necessarily comfortable running for election, going out, getting twenty signatures, but they're more comfortable submitting to a Select Board or to another body and saying, hey, I heard this position's open, I'm not sure if I'm a good fit, but I'm really interested in it. So, sometimes it does allow for people to get more involved, who may hesitate if they had to do so as an elected physician. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Susan Flag, nine hundred and green, wrote Hubbard City, N. Hubbard City right now is a peaceful time. We've had some really bad adventures with, um, developers through the years. Some of you don't know anything about it. This rule, when you had appointments, would lead to a lot of problems in past. It could have been a totally disaster. I know it's peaceful now, I'm glad, but you never know if somebody shows up who takes power and starts appointing people. It's not an easy thing, and it's a nasty thing to see. So, consider that, even if you have to appoint them. If it gets to a situation where you need somebody to run, it's very good, and that option is there. There has been times, some of you shaking your heads, that have been around you for a few years, know that you don't want to open this up to appointments, because you might get some people who take power, you don't want them to have the power to appoint everybody. It could lead to bad things.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any further discussion? Yes, we are still talking about nineteen A, which is limited just to the Board of Health. Sir.
Mr. Moderator, Tony LaPore, four, eight Clark Road.
Please proceed.
In terms of the charter, I know that you have to keep bringing this up. What would it take to change the charter so that we don't have to do this, and we can focus on encouraging people to run for these offices instead?
The chair will defer to legal counsel. Legal counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you, Carolyn Marie from KPMR. You'll notice there's a series of articles here. The first four address whether or not the town meeting wants to convert these four elected boards to appointed boards. Depending on the outcome of those four votes, the final article, or the final portion of Article nineteen, is actually a motion to amend your charter to then reflect which boards will be elected and which boards will be appointed going forward. If I understand your question, however, um, I, I think your question was, how do we amend the charter to get rid of this provision that brings us all here today?
Yes.
It would essentially be, we'd have to, we can't do it, I, I don't think the town moderator would, uh, rule this to be within the scope of the article, but at a future town meeting, there could be an article to amend the charter to strike or amend this section four dash seven dash one, which is what brings us all here. Because as, uh, a member of the Select Board was saying earlier, the town clerk has to provide notice to the Select Board when there's been a failure to elect, and it, the charter, but the charter goes further to say, the Select Board shall then place an article on the warrant at the next town meeting to carry out, you know, to bring this back to this body for a decision. So, if, if that's the part that folks would like to strike, we can talk about that at a future town meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry.
Of course, please.
Sure. So, my family and I believe it's a slippery slope as well, and so, we believe we should vote for those positions and that you all and us can find a way to encourage people by educating them to run for these positions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Woodrow.
In addition to what town council elegantly put, there are also built-in timeframes where the town charter must be reviewed, and those are coming up. They're incredibly specific. You can find them on the town website. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Christopher Monroe, seventeen Seminole. I don't want to prolong this, but I just want to know if people are being appointed and then reappointed. Like, for example, if somebody's appointed, can't they be asked to run for the election the next time? Maybe that would help, I, I don't know.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion as far, yes, in the back, please. The chair is used to seeing you with your usual second, your son.
No, you have caused a wrong kiss, and thank you for your patience and grace with him. Christopher Monroe, Ramsey Road. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, to share how I ended up getting involved with the town. Uh, I actually had reached out to Ryan, I was like, hey, Ryan, I'd like to do something with open space, and he was like, I got just the thing for you. I'm going to have you show up to this meeting, it's going to be great, you're going to love it. And he sent me to the planning board. And I went to the meeting, and then at the meeting, they had a vote to recommend me for appointment to the planning board. And, and it was unconventional, there had been an open seat because somebody had resigned, but I was ultimately appointed to that position. I then had to run for that seat. Running for that seat cost many hundreds of dollars. Signs cost money, I had to go out and get signatures, I had to run online advertising. It is absolutely a barrier for younger people, it's a barrier to people with families, it is, um, to, to, to speak and say that we have to do something to get people motivated. We are people. If you're pointing around the room and you're saying, you guys, you got to get people motivated, you got to remember, there's three fingers pointing right back at you, and you need to be a part of the process. It's tough. Whenever I have to go to a town meeting, I either have to bring my son or pay twenty dollars an hour for the honor of serving the town. So, to say that, um, that we're not already appointing people to these positions, it's false. We're, we're appointing them now, they're not elected. Um, sometimes it gets people involved in, in the process that might not have been there before, because if Ryan had come to me and said, hey, Chris, uh, I got this thing for you, you're going to have to put down a bunch of money, you're going to have to run for the planning board, I would have said, uh, lose my number. So, it, it is potentially an inroad and a way to start getting more people involved in government. It's something that we can certainly take advantage of, and it works out two times. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Monroe. Anyone else for the first time? First time on the, yes, please.
Mr. Moderator, I'm Joshua Tenpenny, twelve Simon's Hill Road. Um, I, I feel like the issue of whether there is someone willing to fill the seat is separate from the voting or appointing. If we have someone who's, who is willing to be on the board, and they're unopposed, there's no reason for them to do anything but get their twenty or twenty-five signatures. They don't need to do any campaigning if there's no one else who's running against them, they just need to get on the ballot and get the signatures. It's a very simple process.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Further discussion? Please.
Mr. Moderator, Kathy Hansgate, one forty-three Williamsville Road.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to second his, uh, statement that getting signatures and without major expenses to be on a board is definitely very common in this town, and to lose your chance as a person and citizen of this town to elect who provides public safety to you should not be taken away from you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Uh, the chair sees none. Uh, so now, the vote is going to be on Article nineteen A, which deals exclusively with the Hubbard City Board of Health. All in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Uh, please lower your card. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Thank you, and the article fails. Now, I'm going to look at nineteen, excuse me, just for a second. suggest, and it is only a suggestion, that the three articles be consolidated, that they be discussed, and that they be voted on one vote as opposed to three votes. Reading the rule, which is the Chair's prerogative, reading the rule, this is, is I think, a just approach as far as this issue goes, okay? So consolidating, so the Chair is going to ask unanimous consent. Town Council, under unanimous consent, no problem with, right? You can do it under unanimous consent. So, the Chair is going to request unanimous consent that Articles nineteen B, nineteen C, nineteen D be consolidated, so those are the three, be consolidated, so, not even, so, those three. So that's going to deal with the Finance Committee, Parks and Recreation, and Cemetery Commission. So, with your approval, with your unanimous consent, you'll be able to address any of those three. There will be ultimately one vote, up or down on the three. Okay? Everyone understand? Chair requests unanimous consent for the consolidation of those three articles. Is there any objection? The Chair here is none, and so, all three are going to be consolidated, and with your, with your approval, Mr. Williams, you'll be making the motion to adopt, and that will be seconded by Ms. Young, okay? Is that okay? Everyone understand where we're going with this? I've been in too many meetings where it's not clear what you're voting on, and so, as moderator, I take this very seriously to try and make sure that everyone understands where we are in the meeting, and if there are any questions, please ask, okay? All right, great. The floor is open, is there anyone who would like to discuss the motion? Is there anyone who would like to discuss the motion? No, okay. Hearing, none. All in favor of the motion, and the motion is to adopt the change for the Finance Committee, the Parks and Recs, and the Cemetery Commission. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. This is, this is, no, consolidation has already occurred, that was unanimous consent. So now it's going to be whether or not you're going to appoint it. If you want appointed, you're going to be voting in the affirmative. If you do not, if you want to keep it elected, you'll be voting in the negative. Madam Town Council, am I have that correct? Thank you, ma'am. So, all in favor of the motion, that is, to have appointed commissions and committees, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Please lower your card. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Looks like a squeaker. Thank you. Lower your cards, and the motion is going to fail.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Woodrow.
Town meeting is a public record, we know who's here. I invite you to come and join the many tens and tens and tens of committees that we have vacancies on. Heck, run us a write-in next week, but get involved. You want your elective office, I understand. The Select Board did not choose by any agenda to bring that onto the floor this evening. It is written by a charter that most of you, or some of you at this point, were here ten years ago to approve, but please volunteer. Thank you.
So, thank you, Mr. Woodrow. The Chair is going to recognize Mr. Williams regarding Article nineteen E.
Moderator, Jeff Williams, four Ebbe Green, Whitehall, the motion to pass over Article nineteen.
Mr. Williams is going to move to pass over Article nineteen E, seconded by Ms. Young, for the information of town meeting. This would have set up the act, the piece of legislation on a state level, to proceed with the changes had they been approved, as far as, as far as the different boards and the commissions. Motion made to pass over, is there any discussion on the motion to pass over? Chair sees none. All in favor, signify by raising your cards. Thank you, please lower them. Those opposed, please signify by raising your cards, and the motion passes unanimously. Article twenty, Article twenty. I move that Article twenty be adopted as printed in the warrant. This is a motion by Mr. Williams, seconded by Mr. Walker. And, Mr. Woodrow, you want to explain it?
Municipal aggregation is the process of taking all of the energy consumers in a municipality and combining them to then be able to negotiate with an energy provider to get a better price. It is the reason why communities such as the City of Gardner have a lower price than we do at this time. Communities that have their own municipal power authority are not eligible to do something along these lines, but municipal aggregation is a money saver. You do not have to opt into it, you can opt out at any time, and this would be the first step. If you look at the document that I left at the front table for everybody, it is drafted up by K.P. Law, where our wonderful legal counsel is coming from, and it gives you a rundown of the municipal aggregation flowchart, and this would be step one, obtain legislative vote. Then we would have to go to begin consultation with DOE, our Department of Energy, Energy and Environmental Resources. Then we would have to prepare a aggregation plan. I'll let you read the rest, but this is step one in an attempt to save money. I would like to thank Mr. Steiger from the Planning Board for bringing this to my attention, among other people. I have seen this work out in a number of communities, and we are here to answer any questions. This isn't something that I was looking to put onto my plate. It will be a heavy lift, but if it can save the residents of the municipality money in the end, it is a worthwhile endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodrow. Any discussion as far as Article twenty? Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bella Calderick, twelve Simons Hill Road. I gather that this municipal aggregation program should help alleviate some individual aggravation? Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Sir.
Hello, Joshua, Mr. Moderator, I'm Joshua Tenpenny, twelve Simons Hill Road.
Please proceed.
My household chooses to pay an extra for an energy supplier for wind and solar, and I understand that not everyone is interested in making that choice, right? But I just want to clarify, would that mean that we, that that's no longer an option for our households?
Mr. Woodrow.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Each individual, each individual resident would be able to opt out of the program. You would get a card before the date to where it switched, there'd be a hard line in the sand, where you would get a card saying, "If you do not want to participate in this program, please go to said website and let us know." Then, even if later you had a change of heart, you could opt in. I believe the opportunity is, you can only do so once every six months, but the opportunity to opt in and out would be up to the resident.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just from the twenty-three DeCoos Road, just a point of clarification, prior to putting energy into the consolidation effort, do we have any information about the baseline that we're starting from? If we're looking for savings, do we know where we're starting from, whether we're actually saving?
Mr. Woodrow.
I've heard from a lot of people that energy prices are driving them insane, so that, and that alone is going to lead me to believe that people would, that residents of Hubbardston and our neighboring communities would like to see their energy rate lowered. I, who live in Gardner, would love to see my energy rate lowered. But, this would allow our, we would work with a consultant, like I said earlier, this is the first step. I'm going to learn a lot about this as we go through it, as I worked on one of these in a former municipality I served in, and it was a great endeavor. The residents enjoyed it and are saving money. They pay much less than you and I in energy at this time, but the consultant would negotiate with the, I'm gonna call him the energy dealer, because I don't know the proper term at this time, but yes, there would be negotiations to ensure discounted rates of energy through the municipal aggregation for periods of time that would be set. Mr. Steiger.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, as you, Mr. Moderator, just another clarification, to point that each resident individually would then have to opt in or out?
Mr. Woodrow. Is it your understanding?
It is my understanding that a letter would be sent out, and you could opt out, and then the remainder of the community would be opted in, and then if you, as an individual home, chose at a later date to opt out, you could do so.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Moderator.
Very welcome, ma'am.
Could Mr. Steiger?
Of course. Please.
Mr. Moderator, Francis Steiger, sixty-five Hill Road, member of the Planning Board. Couple of quick clarifications, and the lady who was just here, the baseline number that you always want to compare against is the number that really comes from a utility provider, which is National, National Grid. That rate changes every six months, and it is basically based on the market conditions. To accentuate something that the town administrator was saying earlier, everybody gets opted in, and you have, as a citizen, the opportunity to opt out. What is really at stake tonight is, is the starting of a process for us to consider this here. Does not mean that this is a done deal. The town may decide it's not worth it, given the total number of individuals who might be interested, or the town size, or even the negotiations. Quite frankly, it is the town's opportunity to do something on behalf of its citizenry. The other thing to keep in mind here is, is that there is an opportunity also for a town that is a small Hubbardston to join up with other municipalities, with other towns, and with other cities, and jointly therefore have a larger number of individuals who could potentially participate and get better rates. Again, this is just the very, very first step, does not necessarily mean that it will be fulfilled, but at least it gives the town administrator and those who would help him the opportunity to explore, for the citizens of this town, a way in which we can get away from the sticker shock that many of us had came November or last year, where our utility rates, very specifically the electric utility rates, ended up costing us sometimes up to three hundred percent more than what we were typically accustomed to. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Hi, Mr. Moderator.
Sure.
Ruth Gagnon, one West Road. Kathy made me do it. So, I heard the word consultant. What costs would possibly be incurred through the process of this to the town itself? Ten thousand, hundred thousand, like, is there?
Mr. Woodrow.
From my understanding, the consultant would not have an upfront cost, they would get a portion of the MCOV proceeds. It's something that we're going to work on and learn more about, but if Mr. Steiger would like to reiterate on that point, but I know the consultant would not be paid by the municipality.
Please.
Francis Steiger, sixty-five Hill Road.
Yes, sir.
It's a very good point. I mean, everybody looks at consultants and says, "Oh, they're getting a piece of the pie." And yes, they have to get a piece of the pie because they're doing a certain level of effort. Consultants in this case typically get a percentage fee from the utilities, but you gotta remember, what the final rate is that we, as a town, eventually negotiate, is one that should be hopefully more favorable, and we still have an opportunity to say no. And so, if the cost of the kilowatt hour from a generation perspective is one that is unfavorable, when compared, say, for example, with National Grid, the town still has the opportunity to say no. And typically, what we're talking about is a very, very small fraction. They play, we're talking about a hundredth of a penny per kilowatt hour, and the reason I'm saying this here is because I was part of this, not in this particular case business, but I did this here professionally some years ago, and therefore I presented this here as an opportunity for us to look at. Again, I'm not involved in this here, I want to make sure that everybody understands this here, but I understand this business, and again, what we're talking about here is a very, very small fraction of money that the utility pays the consultant as a fee, which they then receive as part of their commission. And again, that is to be compared against what the fee would be typically from National Grid, which hopefully should be more favorable. If there's any more questions, I'd be more happy to address some.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else to discuss Article twenty? Chair sees none. All in favor of Article twenty, please signify by raising your card. Thank you, please lower them. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And the article passes unanimously. Thank you. Article twenty-one, I move that the town, amend the town's general bylaws as printed in Article twenty-one of the warrant. This is made by, a motion made by Ms. Rego, seconded by Ms. Young, and under Article twenty-one, you see the specific points, so changing board of selectmen wherever they appear with the word "select board," the word "selectmen" or "selectmen," wherever either appears with the words "select board member" or "select board members" respectively, and the word "chairman," wherever it appears with the word "chair," and the words "building inspector," wherever they appear with the words "building commissioner." Very straightforward there. Any discussion? Any discussion on the article? The Chair sees none. All in favor, oh, sorry, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Sure.
Ross McDonald, the Pine Tree Lane, Hubbardston.
Please proceed.
Inconsistency I notice between Article twenty-one and Article twenty-two pertains to the explanation in both, for the recommended alternative language, I know chairperson in both the explanations, however, that's not within the article that's being voted upon. I'd just like to make it plain that I would, I would strike the use of chairperson, would like clarification, that chairperson would not be used if, of an affirmative, in either Article twenty-one or Article twenty-two.
Thank you, sir. Legal counsel. As it is now written, would they return "chairperson" in fact here? It looks like that is the explanation, but not the actual language.
Correct. If you look at the actual text of Article 21, and I know we're not at Article 22 yet, but since the question goes to Article 22, the motion is to move the articles printed in the warrant. And as printed in the warrant in both of those, the word "chairman" wherever it appears is replaced with the word "chair", not "chairperson" despite the explanation.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you, please lower them. Those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. 13. Thank you, you can please lower them. And there were 13 names, and the article passes. Article 22. Article 22. Motion made by Mr. Monroe, signed in by Mr. Walker. I move that the town amend the town zoning bylaws as printed in Article 22 of the warrant. And we have, again, the word "selectmen" replaced with "select board", the word "select men" or "select men", replaced with "select board member" or "select board members", the word "chairman" replaced with the word "chair", and the words "building inspector" replaced with "building commissioner". Any, any discussion? Mr. Monroe?
Hello, Christopher Monroe. Mr. Grimes Road.
Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Article 22 has been recommended by the planning board and submitted by the planning board. It was done so unanimously by a vote at a public hearing on 3/16/2023. It was advertised twice in the Gardner News with notice nailed to our regional planning agency and neighboring planning boards. We also published notice on the town website.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. Any additional discussion on Article 22? Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. For the, for the record, for the video and everything else. Okay, I'm sorry. If you didn't, again, Mr. Moderator, then your first and last name and your address, please. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
And this is the article including what I'm looking at as 4.186. For the zoning laws, when you turn the-
No.
No.
No. No, ma'am. Separate number.
Okay, that's why I didn't-
Okay, no problem. Any further discussion? Chair sees none. All in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you, please lower them. Those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. Please lower them. Okay, if we have two counters, then please come forward. Why do I put this on you, Mrs. Perrigo? You avoid me like the plague. The next meeting. Okay, so you're going to count to this side, and just count that side. All those in favor, in favor of Article 22, please raise your card. Please low, please lower your card. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. There are 61 in the affirmative, 16 in the negative, and this article is going to pass. Article 23. Article 23. And the motion itself is found on page 24 of the warrant. I move that the town amend the zoning bylaws as printed in Article 23 of the warrant. And this is a motion made by Mr. Perrigo, signed in by Mr. Willburns. And go ahead, Mr. Monroe.
Christopher Monroe, Grimes Road, Chair of the Planning Board. This was published on the town website, published twice in the Gardner News, helped for a public hearing on 3/16, and unanimously recommended by the planning board. And I did want to comment a bit on the history of this because this is actually the culmination of what's been an ongoing project for the last two years.
Please proceed.
And I would like to, I'd like to recognize really the Herculean amount of work that was done by Chair Lindahl and by Mark Radesky on this. Because the reason this is, is on the warrant tonight is because we've spent the last two years going through our zoning bylaws and trying to make sure they match with everything that the town voted on pretty much since, since the turn of the century. And we went in, we found there were a lot of places where what was published, it didn't match. And where we could just make that change to make it match the vote as administrative change, we did so. But we ran all of the changes past town council. And town council said, well, these are things that you should go back to the town meeting. And even though they essentially already were decided, you should just ask for approval again because they're a little more than just scripter's errors. And a scripter error is just an editorial mistake. There are two things that I think are really of note that if someone was to look at in a very critical way, could be considered a substantive change. And those are specifically related to uses. So previously, we required a special permit to operate a daycare in the residential agricultural district. That is a legal understatement law. We cannot do that. It, it also doesn't make good sense from a public policy standpoint. It prevents people from working. And that's not the kind of policy I like to support. We also acquired a special permit for commercial greenhouses. That is also a legal understatement law in the Davis Amendment specifically. So although those may look like substantive changes, that it is essentially the status of the situation as it is because we can't enforce that. It's unenforceable understatement law. So if there's anybody who has specific questions that they would like to ask the planning board through the chair, I'm available and happy to talk about that. But it is the board's position that most of these are non-substantive changes.
Thank you. And if you wouldn't mind just staying nearby in case there are technical questions, you'll be available to, to assist with. Any discussion as far as Article 23? Any discussion as far as Article 23, Mr. Steiger?
Francis Steiger, 65 Hill Road, also member of the planning board. I would like to ask, and this is really of more of a technical nature. And it's really, it should be addressed with by town council or by the town administrator if I may ask the question directly.
Go right ahead.
It's my understanding that last year we as a town passed the BEST bylaw. There are changes that are in here that address this here. My understanding is that the BEST bylaw still, at least to my last communication with the town administrator, was still under review with the Attorney General's office. I understand that we may already have received something back from them. My question therefore to the town council and the town administrator is whether or not any of the review results that stem from that review, the results from the review may impact the wording that we have included on page 21, very specifically, section 45G. And this will, for all intents and purposes, your answer, be applicable also to the next bylaw. And so therefore, I'm taking the opportunity to point this out if I may, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, ma'am.
This will be under Article 20, section, sections 20.2.5 and 20.2.6, both of which make reference to the large-scale town monopotable type installation, including the battery energy storage systems. Thank you.
Thank you. Your choice, Mr. Monroe, town council.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Carolyn Marie, KPLA Town Council. As to the question on the status of the BESS bylaw, for those who may have forgotten, that's the Battery Energy Storage System bylaw. The Attorney General is still reviewing it. I spoke with their office last week. There was a procedural question that they raised in December of last year in terms of how our then-town clerk recorded the two-thirds vote. You might remember at the start of the meeting tonight, we asked for that procedural vote to authorize the moderator to declare a two-thirds vote. That stems in part from what happened at the last year's town meeting. But we're hoping that we will get a corrected vote into the Attorney General's office and that they will then continue their review of the, of the BEST bylaw. Specifically though, to, to the planning board members' question with regard to Article 23 and 24, I deliberately went through these two articles today and compared them to what Article 23 that has yet to be approved by the Attorney General would do. In my opinion, you can still pass both of these bylaws tonight. Now, in Article 24 in particular, where the battery energy storage system is referenced in a number of ways in conjunction with solar, that is very consistent with how the Attorney General is ruling on battery energy storage systems in conjunction with solar. So I, I think Article 24 is fine. Article 23, you are essentially amending your table of uses in a variety of ways to recognize how and where battery energy storage systems are allowed. If Article 23 from the June of 2022 town meeting is ultimately disapproved by the town meeting, then what you will have lost, or sorry, is ultimately disapproved by the Attorney General, then what you will have lost is the ability to specifically regulate the special permit and the site plan review criteria relative to battery energy storage systems. What the default position would then be? You have built into your zoning bylaw now. You have special permit provisions. You have site plan review provisions. You have environmental impact analysis provisions built into the bylaw. So we default back to what the existing bylaw provisions would be in the event that the Attorney General ultimately disapproves the pending bylaw.
Thank you, town council. Any discussion as far as Article 23? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Moderator, just from me, 23, Mr. Monroe. Just a question, I wanted to find out whether I heard correctly. In 4.2, uses committed by special permit residential districts cross out our commercial greenhouse and major center. And did I understand this review's speaker and the planning board to suggest that that is not legal? And yet it remains on the document?
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Monroe?
Thank you for the question. That is absolutely correct. It is in our zoning, and it is prohibited by state law for us to require a special permit for a greenhouse. I'm sure the town council can probably give us the specific citations. Davis Amendment, 40A, something like that. Yeah, 40A, section 3. Same thing with the daycare and childcare facility. We're not allowed to require a special permit for those.
And, and that's why it is strut-proof. Okay? So it is strut-proof.
I appreciate you making that point.
No, no problem, ma'am. Not at all. Any further discussion? Chair sees none. All in favor of Article 23? Please signify by raising your card. We have ballots up in both houses there. All right. Keep your eye on them, too. No, no, no. Look, when that came down in video, please. Oh, Christ. And the election turned with the hands of a two-year-old. Okay, please, lower your cards. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. Okay. And before he does, the article passes unanimously. Thank you. Article 24. Article 24. Christ, Mr. Monroe, you cannot make this up. You cannot make this up. Okay. I move that the town amends the zoning bylaws as printed in Article 24 of the warrant. And this is a motion made by Mrs. Monroe, signed in by Mr. Walker. Under discussion. Mr. Monroe?
Yep, thank you. This was recommended by the planning board unanimously with a vote on 3/29/2023. It was published twice in the Gardner News. Notice was given to the Abbott and Planning Boards and our regional planning organization. And was also published on the town website. Now, I have some, some comments on the planning board's reasoning behind this. The first thing, and I think the most important thing to get out, is this does not restrict residential units in any way, shape, or form. It's not intended to. We debated that pretty heavily at the board. And we tried to work pretty hard to, to craft it in a way this only impacts installations that are grid scale. Something that is large enough to be giving a meaningful impact to the grid. You have the large installations you see when you drive through town that does not apply to solar panels on the roof. Now, we made these changes based upon some lessons that we learned through the last special permits. We also made these changes to close what we perceived as a loophole in the rules. In the rules, you were previously allowed to cut back half of the buffer, the vegetative buffer in your setback if it shaded the panels. Well, the net effect of that, you can see on Williamsville Road, where they cut back all of the trees in the buffer because they shaded the panels. So essentially, we didn't get that screening that the townspeople had voted for in the original version of this law. So that's one of the larger changes we've made in it. The purpose of it is not, is not to try to restrict them. It is to try to make the process smoother for the town. And it's also to have it be a little less impactful. One of the things that came up that was very, that stands out a bunch is we are requiring dark-skY compliant fixtures and for the place to only be lit when their staff present. We're requiring additional drawings when the site plan submitted. We're really just trying to minimize the impact on the neighbors. And if there's any specific questions, once again, I'm happy to answer those through the chair.
Thank you. Specific questions, please. Yes, so discussion on Article 24.
Mr. Moderator, Gal McCork, Twenty-Ninth Street. And I have a question, just basically, I guess, from a technicality standpoint, in twenty point two, which might be thirteen lots size, you have a minimum of eighty thousand square feet originally, which has changed to one hundred seventeen thousand eight hundred square feet. Ultimately, we have, we have a large solar ground mounted panels, but it's not defining where, what is a large south being solar ground mounted panels is for. Am I missing something here? In order word, is that defined or is that just subjective?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Monroe, go ahead.
So we, we proposed this change because the majority of lots that are available for development in the town are five acres or larger. Almost everything that's smaller than five acres already has a house on it and wouldn't qualify. So when, there is a definition for large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations. It's in twenty point two point five, and that's panels covering twenty thousand square feet or more among lot, or middle of the plate capacity of two hundred and fifty kilowatts. And that's done to try to avoid home systems. Now, somebody could have more than twenty thousand square feet of panels and have them up on their roof. They just can't have this ground-mounted system the way it's written.
Thank you. Thank you. Was that clarified, sir? Clarified? Thank you. Any further discussion on Article twenty-four? Chair hears none. All in favor of Article twenty-four, please raise your card. Thank you, please lower your card. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. One. And the article passes, minus that one-nay vote. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, the warrant having been completed, the chair is going to declare the twenty... I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Monroe.
I don't know if it's possible to do so, so I ask, as the moderator and town council, if we could revisit, not the, not the article we just voted on, the previous article, and if it's possible to reconsider the vote as to specifically D, which is building inspector versus building commissioner. That particular change of terminology does lead to confusion in our bylaws and some enforcement issues on whether or not we have somewhat enforced.
Town council, the chair would, would proceed with a motion to reconsider, and seeing that it was passed unanimously, anyone would be able to move?
Sorry, two questions, Bill. The one where we were making editorial changes.
Article twenty-one.
Chair and chairwoman.
Okay. So on Article twenty-one, there were thirteen in the negative. If you voted in the affirmative, say...
Let me just get the number to make sure I have it.
Twenty-two, sorry. Twenty-two. Twenty-two, Mr. Monroe?
Yes, twenty, twenty-two. If it was possible to, to revisit Article twenty-two and specifically split out item D, which is building inspector, wherever they appear with the words "building commissioner", because this is causing problems with enforcement in town. And that's, that's not just a scripter's error. I would like to motion to reconsider the vote as to that subpart.
So on this one, Madam Town Council, the vote was sixty-one to sixteen. So, Mr. Monroe, did you vote in the affirmative? Were you in the, the majority? Were you in the sixty-one?
Did you vote for, or?
I voted for.
Okay. All right. So that, that's, that's important, because you have to be in the prevailing side in order to vote to reconsider.
Well, I just, so, sorry, it's, it's been a long night of shell care. Twenty-two, that, didn't that fail? Or did that pass?
Passed.
Oh, never mind. Withdrawn.
All right. At this point, it's now ten oh one. The, the, the chair, the chair no longer sees anyone in the audience. No. It's now ten oh one, having completed the warrant. The chair would like to thank you all and declare this twenty twenty-three annual town meeting here.